With that, I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 12, 2003, meeting of the Planning Board to order. Karen, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Jim Callahan?
Here.
Mr. Bob Dougherty?
Here.
Mr. Kevin Donovan?
Here.
Mr. Dave Evans?
Here.
Ms. Carolyn Turner?
Here.
Mr. Mike Ventreska? That's it. Chair Claudia Bogan?
Here. The first item on our agenda under "Public Hearings Continued" is a proposed zoning amendment to Section 20 of the Woburn zoning ordinance entitled "Woburn Loop Bike Way/Greenway Overlay District, R.A.M. Zero Cross Street LLC by its attorneys, Ruben and Rudman, L.L.P." Attorney Tarby, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Attorney Joseph Tarby, Ruben and Rudman, 500 Unicorn Park Drive in Woburn, here on behalf of the petitioner. Just to bring you up to date on scheduling, City Council Public Hearing on this matter is scheduled for next Tuesday. The Committee on Ordinance did have a meeting tonight, but I guess they ran through their agenda pretty quick. So we'll need to appear before that committee, or Counsel may very well, if you make a recommendation tonight, address this next Tuesday. Since the Planning Board meeting on August 22nd, John Paul Martinetti and myself have met with the Planning Director and Building Commissioner to discuss additional revisions to the proposed amended ordinance. And we have done that, we have reviewed the proposed language as to frontage that would allow us to see frontage out to Cross Street and Winchester where we have the frontage. And as I indicated at the last meeting, the amendments that have been proposed do not result in any increase in density or decrease setbacks, they're really to clean up an ordinance to make it work for properties in that district. So I'm not sure what more you want us to get into, do you want us to go through the same presentation we did last time? Do you have questions?
I would, not to speak for the Board on your first issue, but I think we all recall your presentation from last time. My memory from last time was that there were some issues that folks were going to meet about.
Yes.
And that would be something I would be very interested in hearing about from either, if it's appropriate, Tina, to come from you, or from Attorney Tarby, you know, that's our memory. I think collectively that there was some issue with some of the language and that folks were going to sit down and hash through it.
And you're correct. When we covered this at the last meeting, I had indicated, at least from my perspective, that I really had no issues with any of the suggested amendments, except for some of the wording that was related to Section 5i about frontage. And the meeting that Attorney Tarby just mentioned did take place last week, and the four of us sat down and tried to come up with wording that would accommodate the concern that I had about the initial wording, and also make sure that it met eventually with approval of the Inspection Services Department, who would actually have to end up issuing permits, and of course, for the petitioner, for the project. So we have worked on that, it's reflected in the draft amendment that I provided to you. And just for the benefit of those that don't have a copy, the way frontage would read in the ordinance as revised, it would say that the minimum street frontage for a townhouse development under this section shall be 100 feet unless the Planning Board authorizes a lesser distance after finding, one, that the frontage is at least 18 feet in width, and two, the frontage provides safe access egress to and from the site by emergency vehicles. So that wording addressed the concern that I had had at your last meeting, and so I would be prepared now to recommend, once the hearing is conducted, that you're...
Okay, all right. So we have moved forward from the last time.
We have.
Beautiful. All right. So this is a public hearing, and anybody in the audience who would like to speak, either in favor or against the proposal, is more than welcome to come forward and state your name and address for the record before starting your remarks.
There's also a sign-in sheet. If we could ask you to name an address, please, for the record.
There's no pen.
Oh, that's a hardship.
That is a hardship.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Done the old-school way.
Yes. Something to be said for that.
Hi, my name is Diane Yebber, I live at 3 Beaumont Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. This is a little different setup, I think, than we saw on the last meeting, at least the one I attended. So I'm a little taken back by the size of it at this point. I do have concerns about the last meeting, I was told that his intentions were to go in and out of Cross Street. Is that still what he intends to do?
Yes.
Has he gotten any approvals from Winchester for this?
That I do not know.
Okay.
We're just at the zoning stage, so I don't know if they've done any early work relative to actual building.
Okay. So that's one of my concerns, because that's always been a contention, I know in the past, with anybody who's been down there. I believe it's only like 18 feet wide, it's 80 feet long. So I know Winchester had issues with that entrance and exit also. And my other concern is water sewer hookups, is that going to go through Winchester also?
I do not know.
Okay, so there's another issue. So my concerns with the, you know, going through Medford Street, the water sewer hookups, I know the Garfield Ave project at the time was having issues with Winchester in getting approval for water sewer hookups for that intended project also. So this is a lot, I think, bigger than that, so I know that may and may not be an issue. And then when I brought up at the last meeting that I attended, from, you know, things that my father had told me when he was a son, and also with Sanborn maps with the Library of Congress of that area and the tanneries that were down there, I think I was reading the article from the last meeting that it was nearby bygone tanneries. I actually have a Sanborn map with me, and I also have a map of his property from the GIS Woburn website. And you can see that, I can pass this around, I didn't have, you know, enough time to make a lot of copies.
Well, I'd be happy to grab one.
Yeah, what I can do is ask someone to make a motion to accept that into the public record, and once that's made, then we can just pass it around.
Okay.
So you don't have to worry. So move.
Second.
And a second. And all in favor? Six in favor, none opposed. Thank you.
So I do have concerns from, you know, my dad telling me stories, when he was a kid, he used to get on there and throw rocks and sticks in the open pits where they took, did the hides and the degreaser pits and things like that down there. So I do have a lot of environmental concerns about that area, because, I mean, even the Crane's Court had issues with the EPA that he needed to clean up on that end. So, you know, that is a very big concern for me. And, you know, it wasn't nearby. It was on that property. I mean, that property has been sitting there, really not used that much, only because I, you know, it's, it used to have, I'm sure it's contaminated. I mean, I believe it needs to be tested, absolutely. Because, you know, there's brooks right nearby, and at the end of Crane's Court, there's a brook. There's a brook that comes behind my house, that goes all the way down through to that property. And, you know, it's, I would be fine with it if it was, it looks a little bigger, like I said, than what I had originally saw. I thought it was, you know, more conservative than that. It would be nice to see that property developed. Whether there should be townhouses down there, I'm not sure. Maybe it should just stay industrial because of the contamination that I think is going to be an issue. So I'd really like that taken care of on the safety factor for, you know, everybody. We don't want to have any issues. But other than that, you know, it's going to end up probably having to go through Medford Street. I have a really gut feeling on that. That's going to be tragic. You know, tragic for our neighborhood, it's a very small neighborhood. I just had a duplex be built across the street from my house, where the Dougherty's family had a single-family house, and the number of cars and traffic has doubled, let's just say the least. And it's hard to get used to, and, you know, I had issues with the Garfield Ave project coming onto Medford Street also. He has all that road frontage on Garfield Ave, so I was like, why doesn't he just go in and out of Garfield Ave? Why does he have to come up through Medford Street? I mean, that has a hill, there's a blind spot, it's very narrow, you know, the same with this end of Medford Street. So it'd be a really shame to, you know, impact our neighborhood, you know, that, with all this extra vehicles going in and out. But hopefully, you know, he does get approval with Winchester to go out onto Cross Street. And like I said, sewer water, all that has to be factored in. So we'll see how the progress goes on this, and I just wanted to tell you that, thank you for listening, thank you for accepting that. And if you have any other questions, just feel free to reach out to me. All right?
Excellent. Thank you so much for coming. All right.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Elaine Prine, and I live at 7 Medford Street.
Welcome.
And my property overlooks this, and I'm concerned to reiterate what Diane just said, that, you know, there were many projects going on down there that they couldn't access from Cross Street. So my concern is if this gets approved, as is, and then all of a sudden it doesn't get, they can't get into Cross Street, are they going to come in on Medford Street? And I can't have 75 cars to 150 cars a day in that neighborhood. Right now, I'm the only house at the end of the street. I understand there's changes can be made, but I'd like to just make sure to come in on Cross Street. So if I could just reiterate that.
Can you sign in?
Yes.
So that we have your name and address, so that we know exactly who came to speak to us, and if we have questions, we know where to go.
Sure. You're welcome to come up and view my property. There's a huge drop-off, so, I mean, I see what they did up in North Woburn, you know, to the property up there, so I can't say never, it can't be done, but it just drops right off, so you just, come on up and take a look.
Thanks for the invitation, and thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Is it appropriate at this time to think about closing the public hearing?
Yes.
All right. What is the will of the Board on that?
Maybe a little further discussion, and then...
Okay, sounds like a plan. So at this point, what we have is some information on this. We have a recommendation, but that I wouldn't feel comfortable asking for that while the public hearing is still ongoing. So are there members that have questions, either for the applicant or for Tina, that they'd like to ask before moving forward on the public hearing?
For the applicant, access to this tract of land, how is that supposed to be gained?
How you doing? Carlton Quinn with Allen Major, Associate Civil Engineer.
You can be fair and full, back up.
Sorry, just give me a second.
Yeah, my heart goes out to those people. I've been there.
The maps were in our packet for last meeting, right?
They were.
They were, okay. I'm just going to go get them.
Sorry about that. Do you mind repeating your question?
So for the tract of land there, or that's being proposed, is in red, access to that property from which thoroughfares arose in the city?
From Cross Street only.
Cross Street only.
I'm not sure it's feasible to meet the elevation changes on any of those other streets as are 30 or 40 feet above the site.
So your proposal tonight only has one access to this property.
Correct.
And the width of that entrance on Cross Street, the width of the entrance on Cross Street?
It's around 25.6 feet with between 18, this is a planted bracket, 18.46, and then there's a seven-foot easement that goes along with that, so 25.46 feet total.
Which the driveway width would be somewhere in the low 20s, more than likely.
The current thought is it'll be 20 feet wide, which is the minimum per NFPA fire code with a five-foot walkway.
Number of units and occupants per townhouse development of this style, per unit?
It's currently proposed at 37, and I believe, we don't have a full bedroom count for each unit.
So it'll be a mix of...
But they're moderately sized, they would be...
Will they be a mix? Will they be a mix of bedrooms, one, two, and three bedrooms, or one or two bedrooms?
I don't think we've gotten that far, to tell you the truth.
Okay, that's all I have for questions at this time, thank you.
Okay. Are there other questions for the applicant?
No, my question was...
You're good. So, Joe, this is a zoning, your proposal today is to allow your client to even start the process of design by making the zoning conform in all respects to what your client is looking for. That's right?
Yeah, that is correct, and it then would require a special permit from the Planning Board where, I think Mrs. Prine asked a question about, yeah, today it's Cross Street, tomorrow it could be Medford. Well, when you grant the special permit, you impose a condition that restricts access to Cross Street. So we would go through a process with the Planning Board where all the concerns would be addressed and conditioned as part of a special permit.
Okay. And I just wanted to be clear that this was going to be a separate process, like, say this zoning amendment does go through, then that separate process of actually looking at the project itself will begin, and since you've already heard commentary that talks about access and contamination and things of this nature, you've got sort of a preview of coming attractions when you come back to us with the proposal of the exact thing that you would like to build in this newly rezoned or tweaked zoning district. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, are there any other questions from the Planning Board before perhaps there would be a motion to close the public hearing, if so desired by the group? Bob?
Go ahead, Carolyn.
Oh, Carolyn, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I did not see your hand, I apologize.
Sure, through the chair to Tina. I'm looking at the proposal in Section 5i.
Yes.
It has Section 5.2.1.4 shall not be applicable. Can you just explain that further and what it's... It talks about the servicing of lots between years prior.
Yes, let me just pull it out so I can quote it directly to you. So right now, there is a provision in the ordinance, zoning ordinance, at Section 5.214, that says that access to the buildable portion of a lot shall be gained from a lot's legal street frontage only. So this is a case where technically the frontage they have is, they want to access over Cross Street, and Cross Street affords 18 feet of frontage in the town of Winchester. So they wanted to make clear that there would be no issues using that access to the Winchester Street. Am I correct, Joe?
Yes. You know, the only other way to obtain legal frontage would be to...
Build out Medford Road or one of the other streets, and that's not something we wanted to encourage.
Correct.
My question, thank you.
All right, Carolyn, are you good?
I am.
Okay. Are there other questions or concerns or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, there is a motion by Bob, is there... Another question, Jim?
Yes, I did.
Feel free.
So what it boils down to is the Cross Street entrance at 20-some-odd feet currently is 75 feet of the zoning bylaws, correct?
Sorry, one more time?
Bylaws call for 100 feet of frontage, coming in off Cross Street, you stated, and you're looking for relief from the city to accept 18 feet, I think it said, or 25 that we currently have?
Well, it would allow the Planning Board during a special permitting process to waive the frontage requirement from 100 down to 18 feet if it made the additional findings that the access was at least 18 feet and the frontage provided safe access egress by emergency vehicles. So the change in the zoning would simply allow the Planning Board to waive the frontage requirement during the special permit, if it shows.
Thank you.
Jim, are you good?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Who's the second?
I think Bob made the motion.
Motion to close the public...
And then it was the motion to close the public hearing, and then I don't believe there was a second before I realized that Carolyn had a question.
Second.
Second by Carolyn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Two, three, four, five. Five in favor?
One opposed.
Five in favor, one opposed, that motion carries, the public hearing is closed. I would, at this point, ask the Planning Board Director for her recommendation.
I would recommend that the Board consider forwarding to the Counsel a report that suggests and recommends that these amendments be adopted, and these amendments would be as modified by the Board or as recommended by staff at the last meeting relative to the associated criteria and buffer requirements, and then this evening relative to Section 5i.
So the recommendation is to send a favorable recommendation, but with the amendments that we see in our Attachment A today, which is a, has to do with some of the ordinance, and then the amendments that were seen on our Attachment A of last meeting. Do I have that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does anyone have questions or comments for the Planning Board Director? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the Planning Board Director's recommendation.
All right, there is a motion by Bob to accept the Planning Board Director's recommendation. Is there a second? Second by Carolyn, is there discussion? I hear no discussion. There is a motion that has been made and seconded, I would ask for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four in favor, and two opposed, Dave and Jim opposed. That motion carries. Good luck with the Counsel.
Thank you.
All righty. Next on the agenda under "Public Hearings," there is a zoning text amendment to Section 10, Cluster Development. The applicant is JDC Realty Trust, and we have today Attorney Salvati. Welcome.
Good evening. On the record, Attorney Mark Salvati, 57 Arlington Road in Woburn, for the petitioner. We've met with Tina and the Building Commissioner on this a couple of times, and we've made some suggestions. Now, cluster development has, I think, only been used once in this city since it was adopted back, I believe, in the early 80s, and that was, I think, over at Quail Run. So it's not a very used portion of this, but we do have a site specific that we think would be very handy for it. The idea of the cluster is to gain open space and allow for the petitioner to keep the same number of units that they would get if they were to do a full-blown subdivision, reduce the amount of asphalt and everything else that goes with these subdivisions and the turnarounds, and hopefully make it a better site for all. So I believe you probably have seen the proposals, I think Tina has asked for a couple of small amendments to those. I'd be glad to go over them or answer any questions if you have them specific to each one.
All right. Does any member have any questions for Attorney Salvati?
So there'll be no, this doesn't increase the number of units, it just puts them in a close proximity so there's more green space around you.
Right. The cluster development in general, the change, the only change that does, I guess you could say increases that, and we think it was a typographical error back in the day, was that it used to read that the number of units you could have under a regular subdivision had to be equal to the number of lots, which was somewhat backwards. So if you had lots, if you had 10 lots that you could put two units on each, you should have 20, and therefore be able to get 20. We're trying to rectify that. That's the only change specific to that question. But yeah, the idea of cluster in general is to take all the property, we have nice open space somewhere, as long as everyone has access to it in that development, they can get at that open space and to, you know, push them onto smaller lots with smaller setbacks, but still maintain the same number that would be allowed under the subdivision rules.
Okay, I'm good.
All right. Are there other questions for the applicant? All right. This is a public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak, either in favor or opposed to the item on the agenda, feel free to come up, state your name and address for the record, and sign into our sign-in sheet. All right, I do not see anybody that wishes to speak. Tina, would it be appropriate to ask for a closure of the public hearing at this point, or...
Yes.
Okay. So if it is the will of the Board, I would entertain such a motion.
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Dave, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, I'd ask for a vote on the motion. All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, six in favor, none opposed. That motion carries, the public hearing is closed. Tina, do you have a recommendation for us?
I do. I would recommend that the Board consider sending to the Counsel a report that in turn recommends adoption of the proposed amendments, those amended, those suggested or requested by the petitioner, but incorporating the few edits that have been made by, recommended by planning staff. Those are shown, planning staff's amendments are shown in red in the attachment.
All right. That is the recommendation. What is the will of the Board?
So moved.
Motion by Dave to accept the Planning Board Director's recommendation, is there a second? a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'd ask for a vote, please. All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, none opposed. That motion carries. All right. Good luck with the council. Oh, sure. All right. Next on the agenda is recommendation to city council relative to laying out and acceptance of Tower Office Park Drive as public way. All right. Attorney Tarby, welcome again.
Okay, so what's before the planning board is a petition for acceptance of a public way pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter 82, Section 21, Title 12, Article 1, Article 3, excuse me, Section 12-5 of the Woburn Municipal Code. Petition filed by Counselor Dick Gailey requesting the layout of Tower Park Drive as a public way. That was filed with the city clerk's office, and as required by statute in the municipal code, the petition was referred to the city council's Committee on Public Lands, Infrastructure and Public Lands. In addition, petition is reviewed by the planning board, which then submits a report to the subcommittee, and then the subcommittee sends its recommendation to the full city council. The full city council then holds a public hearing in which any property owner is touching the proposed public way or give a notice of the public hearing. So, you know, I know I provided a history of Tower Park Drive a few years ago when we were before you on a project that ended up not going forward. It was, you know, it was an Amazon, you know, supermarket and just couldn't control the traffic, and that thing never went forward. But prior to 1983, a portion of Tower Park Drive was owned by Bill Cummings and his wife Joyce as trustees of the WS Cummings Realty Trust. The other portion was owned by Herbert Motors that my firm represented, and in 1983, the city of Woburn became the owner of the fee in Tower Park Drive pursuant to an order of taking by the city, followed by confirmatory deeds from Cummings and Herbert. Tower Park Drive was laid out as a public way pursuant to a taking that was voted on by the city council on April 7, 1983. The order provided a meets and bounds description of the two parcels, one being Parcel A, one being Parcel B, that were shown on a 1982 plan that was prepared by the city of Woburn Engineering Department. That plan was recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and since that time, people relied on Tower Park Drive being a public way. The order that was recorded at the registry stated, this order states, "It is ordered that portions of Parcel A and Parcel B are hereby laid out and accepted in the manner described below as public highways." The order further states that Parcel A and Parcel B are taken for highway purposes here and after set forth, and then damages were established with a dollar going to the owner of Parcel A. I can't recall whether that was Cummings or Herbert, and $21,300 to the owner of Parcel B. So, on its face, the order showed both Parcel A and Parcel B on the taking plan and laid out as a public way. However, fast-forwarding to 2014, in connection with the Woburn Landing project, the city solicitor was asked to look into whether or not property owners along Tower Park Drive could avoid going through the Mass THOT process since it was... Everyone thought it was a public way. Her research indicated that what everyone thought was a public way and what lenders and property owners relied on since 1983 as a public way, the city council back in 1983 had not followed the proper procedure, and they didn't file what's called a plan and profile plan to make it in compliance with taking. So, Tower Park Drive at one time went straight down to Washington Street. You see it, see it's clearly shown on the plan. When Mass, it was Mass Highway at the time, brought up the on and off ramps across the street, they wanted to make sure that Tower Park Drive lined up directly opposite the off ramps. So, as a result, the takings were made showing those two parcels land. Now, that land, you know, today, there's signage on the land advertising Cummings and I'm not sure whether it advertises Woburn Landing or just Cummings. So, what makes this process important, I think Carolyn Turner brought this up during the last hearing on the question on Section 5.2, that section of the Woburn zoning ordinance requires access to the buildable portion of a lot shall be gained from a lot's legal street frontage only. Access to lots by so-called common driveways or access easements shall be prohibited. So, currently, 395 Washington Street, which is owned by an affiliated company of Cummings Property, does not have legal street frontage because of a change in the zoning and the finding by the city solicitor. 399 Washington Street's legal and sole frontage is on Washington Street, and given the location of the frontage on Washington Street and the traffic improvements that have been completed, very, very doubtful that Mass DOT would ever allow a direct curb cut directly on Washington Street. So, as a result, you have a lot for our practical purposes that's not buildable because it lacks legal street frontage. So, the purpose of filing this street acceptance plan is to make it a public way. Have the city council accept it as a public way, then it would provide access, legal street frontage and access to that lot. Now, before someone asked a question, you see the access right now into Woburn Landing. So, that was laid out as part of the development because we all thought it was a public way. We found that it wasn't a public way, and that access was built, the city agreed to grant the owner of Woburn Landing an access easement to use for our purposes, for which public ways are used in the city of Woburn, over Tower Park Drive for ingress and egress to its property. So, Carlton is going to take you through the proposed plan. We're really restricted in terms of what we can do with Tower Park Drive, and keep in mind, it has been used since 1983 for, you know, WR Grace Development that was there, Salata Tea Company that was originally on that site, and several car dealerships along with Cummings' property in the back of Tower Park Drive. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Carlton, and he'll take you through the layout of the street acceptance plan.
Good evening. Carlton Quinn with Allen &amp; Major Associates. As we just went over, in front of you right now is an aerial of the existing layout of Tower Park Drive. There's the access to Woburn Landing. This is the access to the rear lot, and you can see two older accesses to the 399 Washington Street lot here. This is the recorded taking plan, showing the old layout here, and then the taking showing the new layout here as part of that 1983 process. This plan is showing the current layout, striping and profile with utilities of Tower Park Drive. Currently, the width of the right-of-way or the property owned by the city is 60 feet wide, in which this way runs through. It has an existing sewer line, drainage line currently running through the area. This is a proposed layout of the new right-of-way. It's showing one 22-foot drive aisle coming in and two 12-foot drive aisles leaving the property. So, it's about 46 feet in pavement width with a 5-foot sidewalk providing new pedestrian access, which Tower Park Drive currently lacks. It also shows a new sewer line to be... The sewer lines to be replaced, as well as the drains in the right-of-way will be replaced. It's also showing a new water line service that will be provided within the way to the rear property. That water line is currently running across 399 Washington without an easement, so we will be upgrading all the utilities in the right-of-way as part of this. We'll be providing vertical granite curb on both sides, street trees, and some landscape strips. As part of this process, the current lot here will be turned into a right-of-way, will be provided an additional 25 feet of frontage to make the legal frontage for the rear lot meet the current zoning requirements. So, currently, right now, there's only 100 feet here, so if this was switched into a right-of-way, it's only providing that rear lot, you know, non-conforming frontage, an existing non-conforming frontage. So, we're going to provide a land swap to provide them their required frontage on this rear lot, as well as providing the frontage for our lot also. This is just the existing property lines of the way that's surveyed, and here's an A&R Plan showing the proposed lot and the land swap here to provide the adequate frontage to the rear of the site. That's the extent of the presentation.
All right. Thank you. Does any member have a question for the petitioner? Jim?
Here. Tractor trailer turning radiuses on these bends? Have they been plotted?
They haven't been plotted, but it has been designed to meet the requirements to get a tractor trailer to the rear property.
Well, does a tractor trailer cross over the median?
No, these are fairly wide drive aisles as it's 22 feet coming in and 24 feet leaving.
Okay. Thank you. Are there other questions for the petitioner? All right. Tina?
Yes.
Do you have a recommendation?
I do, and it's somewhat similar, or it is very similar in many respects to the report that I recommended to you three years ago. Similar to that, back that time, we had a department meeting with department heads who provided me with some comments, and I would recommend that you consider sending a report to the council that suggests that the planning board reiterates its recommendation that the roadway should be improved prior to acceptance or, excuse me, should be improved as a condition of acceptance as a city street. There's a mention of the vertical curbing. It was essential that it be on both sides. I thought I detected a disconnect between sheets in the set, so I would simply recommend that the board reiterate its requirement or its recommendation, excuse me, that vertical curbing be used on both sides of the road. The 5-foot concrete sidewalk that is proposed for the south side of the roadway does generally satisfy the board's earlier recommendation from several years ago where you were looking for a 6-foot wide sidewalk. 5 is just as adequate. Recommending that the road be reorganized, and I had recommended appropriate number of 12-foot wide travel lanes with 2-foot shoulders and grass strips, and the incorporation of bicycle lanes. I realize they've done a different configuration. It'll have to meet the approval and the requirements when and if there is development on the abutting property, but as for bicycle lanes, there have been none that have been added. A cul-de-sac or other turnaround mechanism should be provided at the end of the roadway layout. It would be particularly useful when the city, if the city is now maintaining it and they bring a plow up there, how does the plow turn around and come back out of the roadway? It would suggest that the only provision right now would be to have them reverse direction by using the aisles of the parking lot on the Cummings property. What's different from three years ago is that we have been brought to our attention, and there's some photographs I included in your packet. Someone has taken it upon themselves to go out there and restripe a portion of Tower Office Park Drive, and you saw some of it even in the aerial that was there this evening. Not sure who did it, but I've talked to several people that have been up in that neighborhood using it, visiting areas up there, and they report that it's very confusing and somewhat dangerous, and someone should not have gone in there. If you can see, it's hard to see it in the aerial, but there are, you know, two lanes of traffic exiting out, but that white line sort of fades into the double yellow with, you know, like, I don't know how that lane starts. So, it really needs to be rectified in the field. It should be fixed immediately and not left for a period of time, and I would recommend you include something like that in your comment letter. The petitioner has put in, recommended streetlights at about the 200-foot interval, which the board had previously recommended. That's what you use for your subdivision rules and regs, and they would follow that same standard. Drainage is shown. There is a portion of the system that exists, but the planning board, I would recommend defer, and the council to the city engineering department for review on that. At the time, and I guess I would ask a clarifying question in the midst of my recommendation, and I apologize for this, but Mr. Quinn, did you say that you were going to completely replace the sewer system? So, then perhaps I'm going to modify my recommendation. It had been to telecamera the existing lines and to clean them out and repair them as may be needed, but if the plan is to take them all out and put all brand-new pipe in, then there wouldn't be a need for that. So, I'm going to skip what would have been my recommendations on drainage and sewer lines in that regard.
So, G on your...
FNG.
FNG, okay.
Yeah. Those both talked about the drainage and sewer lines needing telecamera.
So, you would take those out, then?
I would take those out of my recommendation based on the testimony tonight. There is, or there was, there is a speed bump. You can see it, vertical yellow speed bump in that overlay, and there's some perpendicular parking spaces that have been painted within the roadway layout, and those should clearly be eliminated and appropriate regulations put in place to ensure there's no parking in that area if it's intended to be a road. Also recommending from the planning board that you include a recommendation that they provide a written deed description of the Office Park Drive right-of-way. That way, it can be submitted for recordation along with the plan. There seem to be at least one small portion of the Tower Office Park Drive right-of-way that was on abutting privately-owned property at 399. It's a very tiny triangle, and... Right there. Yes, right there. So, the recommendation in the letter would be that any areas of the roadway that encroach under private property should be incorporated into the right-of-way limits and deed it to the city. That way, all the improvements are within the right-of-way. And then, an earlier memo from the engineering department several years ago noted that a private party that was doing a development may well have put some unauthorized fill within the limits of the right-of-way. If the city were to accept the right-of-way, then it would then be accepting that material, and the suggestion should be that that issue be investigated by the council and resolved prior to ownership. prior to ownership, if in fact anything is there that should not be. And then lastly, I would close with a recommendation that the board urge the council to make sure that there's private financing for the construction and tasks associated with these improvements. Rather than have them borne generally by the taxpayer, it would be appropriate to have them borne by perhaps someone who's in the neighborhood developing. I would also recommend that the board might suggest to the council to look into the possibility of having them post a performance bond, because in the end, my concern is that if the council accepts this as a city street, and then there is a need for a significant improvement if the water line that's in there breaks, how does that get fixed if the city is already the owner? I would like to see that the city not have to pay for that repair, and that it be borne, you know, by the developer that comes down the road. So that would be my recommendation, that you include language suggesting that the council consult with a solicitor to safeguard the city's position in the financial arrangement in the event redevelopment of the site is either delayed or for some reason doesn't take place. And that would be my recommendation for you to file as a report.
All right. So essentially, your recommendation is that there would be a motion that the planning board adopt the letter dated September 13, 2023, that you've put as attachment C to our meeting staff report, but with the deletion of 1F and 1G as no longer being necessary.
Correct. And the only other amendment I would make is to item number one, I would reword that slightly to say the board reiterates its recommendation that the roadway should be improved as a condition of acceptance as a city street.
So instead of prior to, it should be improved as a condition of...
Yes.
Acceptance as a city street. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And to this letter would be appended the photographs of the bad striping, and a copy of your July 2020 letter to the council that was previously filed.
Okay. A July 2020 letter, as well as the photographs of the striping.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that is the planning board director's recommendation. Are there any questions for Tina? If there are none, I would entertain, oh, Carolyn?
Just one follow-up to Tina through the board. You mentioned the performance bond, is that in here?
Yes, that would be in the very last, the next-to-last paragraph, starts with, is the understanding that the cost would be borne?
Okay.
And you'll see in there. To that end, maybe it does have the proponents post a charity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Carolyn, are you good?
I am.
All right. Any further questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion. Bob?
I'd make a motion to accept the director's recommendation in its entirety, and I'll read the whole thing back? No. But I'd like to make a motion to accept the director's recommendation.
All right. There's a motion by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I would ask for a vote, please. All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Six in favor, none opposed. That motion carries. All right. Good luck with the council.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Next on the agenda, under subdivisions, Baker Way, expiration of construction completion date. The petitioner is David Baker, and Attorney Salvati, welcome again.
Good evening again, Attorney Mark Salvati, 57 Arlington Road in Woburn, representing David Baker. This was approved back in 2017. We're at a point now where the only thing holding us up is some discussions with the DPW chairman about some issues on Washington Street. This is, just to be clear, this is not any problem at Baker Way, but somewhat of it, where the trench was put in for the water line, it has sunk a little bit over the years, but I'll explain why we think that is, and why we don't think we're responsible. So a quick, brief history. The work on Washington Street for this project was done in November of 17. They finished paving Baker Way April 16, 2020. There were then multiple delays in getting the street signed, then delays with the neighbor who made some changes in the right-of-way without approval of the planning board. In August of '21, the engineering department stated that all was complete except for an ASBIL plan with an engineer certification, and also stating that the work that the neighbor had done. We got approval from the planning board to allow the changes done by the neighbor at our own cost. And during all this time, Eversource had dug up Washington Street near these shut-offs. They staged all their equipment across the street and used Baker Way as a turnaround for their large equipment, which has been going on for some time now. So the one bump in the front of the road of Baker Way is really minor in comparison to the rest of Washington Street, which will actually be repaved by Eversource when they are done anyway. So what the planning, the DPW chairman is recommending is that we mill and pave about 100 feet of this, which will then be ripped up by Eversource in the near future. So it's our position that the intervening actions of others caused the issue in question, and we should not be responsible. So based on that, I made a request to release the bond if it is found that the bond is active, we're not too sure on that, but to release the bond and to release the petitioner of any further work to be done. So with that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
All right. Does any board member have any questions for Attorney Salvati? Bob?
Mark, so if Mr. Baker was willing to do the extra work again, are you saying that that would be ripped up again at some point?
That's our understanding from Eversource, and I believe that's the understanding from Jay Duran as well, in speaking with him, that eventually, when Eversource is done, Washington Street's going to be paved all the way down from Winchester to the intersection. So, yeah, if he were to do this work, we firmly believe that it would be ripped up again.
And he's already done it once.
He's done it once.
Okay.
Right. And again, it's our position that the work that Eversource did has basically ruined what he did, and caused the problem.
Okay. Dave?
So has anybody indicated this is a safety hazard in the roadway?
Well, I think the neighbor has complained, you know, like, it's probably loud when people go over it, maybe, you know, landscape trailers, they bounce on it a little bit. I haven't heard from engineering or from DPW that it was a safety hazard, although I think the neighbor did say a hubcap flew off into his yard. But I have not heard from any city officials that there was a safety hazard.
How much of a drop do you think it is?
Have you been out there, Tina?
No.
I'd say maybe two inches.
Which could be substantial.
Could be substantial.
At a road, what's the speed limit there, 35?
Two.
I mean, I'm not asking what people drive.
I think it's 35.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that can be a hazard.
Sure. You know, again, don't quote me on the two, it might be one, but it's not three.
Are you good? Any other questions for Mr., for Attorney Salvati? No. All right. Well, Tina, do you have a recommendation for us on that?
You know, I'm not sure I do. I have sympathy on both sides. I certainly, I don't disagree with anything that Attorney Salvati has said about the history of how this has come to be, and including the Eversource. I can also add that I remember, right after the trench was done, we weren't really thinking about having it redone, because at that point, the DPW director was, and Eversource's timeline was such that they were going to be coming through and doing the repaving that Attorney Salvati mentioned. So it wasn't until maybe a year or more after the trench was completed that the DPW director started to say, listen, I think we're going to need to have you redo that, because it is deteriorating. So I also have a colleague in Jay Duran, who tries to do the right thing. I will say that if this trench is fixed, it'll be the only trench that's fixed out there for a while, there's a lot of them out there, and it's a long stretch of bumpy road, and unfortunately, it's going to remain that way until Eversource does finish their job. So this is a hard one. There's no clear, easy, correct answer here.
Okay. All right. What is the will of the board? We have a situation where Mr. Baker is asking for his money back, and we have a situation where the DPW director is asking for this to be fixed. Dave?
Tina, through the chair. There have been no reports of safety issues, correct?
None from city departments. Attorney Salvati was correct. We did get a letter from an abutter, from someone who said that a hubcap did fly off a car within the last week or two and end up in, near, in his yard, and, you know, was a concern if there'd been somebody potentially in the yard at the time it came off. But that's the only one that I've heard.
So is the decay of the, because we know what happens to the road, it goes down, it gets, the winter's coming, it gets cold, it freezes, blah, 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 blah.
And it's been through a couple of winters, that's why.
Right. So, I mean, is this, is this in peril of becoming a hole?
I don't, I didn't get that impression at all.
Okay.
No pun intended. But I did not get that impression. Instead, it was, I think, a repair that could be done. DPW, several months ago, had estimated, though, that doing the 100 feet would cost somewhere between $10,000 to $15,000 to have it done. And the bond that we have, at the moment which the solicitor, and I do believe is still in effect, it was a different type of performance bond than you normally accept. But we believe it's still in effect, and that's a balance of $45,000. But we would use about a third of that to repair this trench if you'd elect to follow the DPW director's recommendation.
So if Eversource does what we know Eversource does, which is, time goes on and they're not done, you know, we've had people in front of us because of Eversource forever, is this possibly, could this become a hazard if it's left away?
Well, I think the reason why Jay Duran is now, is again suggesting, or continues to suggest, the patch is that he thought the Eversource project, based on what it was defined and the timeline several years ago, he thought this project would be done. But when I spoke to him about 10 days ago, he said, you know, I even just within the very recently, received another revision to the proposed construction from Eversource that I'm reviewing. So they're still changing and tweaking some of their projects, so that tells me that it's going to be even longer to get to completion on that than, you know, we'd envisioned to date. So I think that the period of time is certainly a factor in the DPW director's recommendation.
But the applicant's position is that they fixed it, and it's...
I fixed it.
Eversource's work...
Yes.
...has caused the problem.
Yes.
So we're in the dilemma of, we have to look at the public safety, but we also have to look at who's responsible for this.
And reasonableness. Do you pin that on a developer that had nothing to do with it?
Yeah. And I'm not sure.
Hmm.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that is dilemma on the table. Jim?
Through the chair. Tina? The roadway patch for Baker Way, is that completely encapsulated in the paving area for Eversource?
Yep. Yep. That and a lot more.
Just for a little FYI, this Eversource project did pave on Washington Street in Winchester, from Cross Street down to the Gingerbread House, that area, so it's from that point going all the way down to, and beyond Leyland Park towards Marvell Ave. Nevertheless, they have started some paving recently. That was all I had.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Does anyone else wish to comment on this issue? So, we have choices. We can give the developers money back, we can hold the developers' money, we can revoke the bond, and all of those have their pluses and minuses. As Dave always looks out for public safety, his questions were targeted to that. In terms of Jim's questions on what Eversource does and doesn't do, it's on Eversource, really, not this developer. So fairness is, and equities as to this developer that we happen to have in front of us, you know, that's a real concern. So he'd like his money back, we owe him an answer. So either he gets his money back, or he gets his money taken, I guess. Holding his money any longer, just so we can think about it, I'm not sure is a fair result either.
Yeah. I was trying to think, is there anything that you would want to know, or a question you would want me to pose to Jay Duran? And I'm not coming up with something succinct, so...
Right. So there is a very simple sort of decision to be made here, and we are the folks to do it, so jump in.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Bob. What is your motion?
To release the funds and declare the project finished.
All right. There's a motion on the table from Bob. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Dave. Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, I would call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. All in favor and unopposed. Your developer gets his money back.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Sherman Terrace, expiration of construction completion date. Attorney Salvati, again, welcome.
This one's not going to be so easy.
And that was maybe not the easiest one.
That was not, hey, I'm impressed that you guys got through it, though. Well done, well thought of.
Say that again, please.
I said, this one's not going to be as easy.
He was impressed with you guys.
I was impressed.
I wasn't sure, I don't hear that very often.
Oh, I know. I'll read it right into the record, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Sherman Terrace. So this is a two-lot subdivision off of Sherman Place, which started a few years ago. It's been extended a few times. We have basically finished the project, but let me give a little caveat to that. We filed an ASBIL plan today, which obviously, engineering didn't have time to review, and planning board did not have time to review. So obviously, that cannot be too much of the discussion. There are some discrepancies and some missing items on that ASBIL plan, admittedly. I think we are asking for a little bit of time to cure those things. Mainly, they are that the bounds are not set, and the trees that were agreed to be installed have not been put in. So we'd like a little time to look at that. And one reason that we did not do the trees was because there was a change in the site where they put in a retaining wall in the back, which we think obviated the need for the trees. Mr. Pooch, who lives, is the first house just before the subdivision, and shares, or has a, he's been over the driveway, doesn't want the trees. But I'm told now that the next neighbor, there's three lots that are but, are two lots, that the neighbor does want the trees for privacy, which we're willing to do. So I think, I guess, what I'm asking is for some time to come back with, I guess, what would be an amended plan, approval of an amended plan, and then approval of an ASBIL plan to address those issues. The other one, which I think is a minor issue, was that the stabilized turf turnaround that was required between the two units was installed a little bit outside of the easement area. So I have to write a new easement, which is not a big deal, because we still own that house. So there would be an easement to the HOA that would revise the current easement that gets recorded and incorporates and includes the turnaround. With that, I'd be glad to take any questions. I apologize, I think Tina may have given out the plan, I'm not sure, but...
Mark, can you address the fence issue? There's apparently an abutter that has a problem with a fence.
This was the first I heard of the fence, which I think is the second, the second lot in these, I think these people are in, it's Sherman Place, Sherman Terrace, and Sherman Place Lane or something up there, but...
Yes.
So the three that are but the back of our lot, I think it's the second one in, who had a fence that we put, my client put a retaining wall pretty close to that fence, and now I'm told has basically ruined the fence or undermined the fence, which I believe we are willing to fix, but this was the first we've heard of it. So again, we would need some time to talk to that neighbor, see what they want, what is needed, and what we can put in. Actually, the next person up, the last one, did work on his site, which kind of caused us to do the retaining wall back there so that he could keep his fence, so it was somewhat of a trade-off, but... So, it was somewhat of a trade-off, but.
All right. So it sounds like there's a variety of open issues. It sounds like you have an expired subdivision.
Yes.
All right. So, have all the open issues been put on the table, Tina? Have we missed anything?
I, I'm going to have to rely on Attorney Salvati, who listed the remaining work. You said stone bounds had not yet been set.
Stone bounds.
And the installation of the border trees.
The border trees and the street trees, and the as-built plan.
That's still
And the revised easement.
Right.
So I think there's four major items.
And the fence issues, the tree issues,
Yeah.
The easement issue.
Yeah, I don't think the fence issue is really a subdivision question, it's just that something we'll do for the neighbor. Yeah.
Jim, I saw your hand up.
Yes. The added retaining walls, not showing the original development, correct?
Correct.
Not those in need of design by a licensed engineer.
I'll have to find that out, Jim. I don't know that answer.
I believe they do.
If they were, you know, put in
Well, if
Under the building permit.
We'd be avoiding the fence issue, I think. Because there'd be a set of plans and details to be followed, and
If the retaining wall weren't in, you mean?
The field-sown rubble wall, riprap, if you wish, that has been put in, just in the field. There's no design to it, and now we have the issue of the fence. We're already expired our permit, and the way the language is being discussed tonight concerns me. I went on the record last meeting that I wasn't going to give this project an extension, and I don't intend on doing that going forward.
Understood.
But I also want to see this thing done, and done correctly, and not like previous projects.
Right.
So please look into it, and go for the building commissioner to weigh in on retaining walls, and I'm quite sure it's in the language of the building code.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Attorney Salvati? Dave?
So what date are we looking at?
Well, that's an excellent question. I mean, it sounds like there are some loose ends here. The fact that you've gone ahead and filed an as-built plan today, that's all to the good. And so the question is, can you be ready to show up with problems solved by our next meeting?
No. We had discussed 30 days today.
Yes.
I think
The board has a meeting on October 24th.
I think we should go to November, but that's, you know, that's up to the will of the board. If you, if you want me to come back with an update, I honestly think that 60 days might be more reasonable or attainable. So that would be, I guess, the second, the second meeting in November, if there are two.
All right. Well, thank you for those options. So basically, I believe what we're looking at here is putting the matter over without granting any sort of extension or enlargement of time on the subdivision, putting the issue of can we put this subdivision to bed over for some period of time? And the question for the board is, until when? Dave?
So a question to Jim through the chair. You have some experience with this. What's the latest you can plant a tree?
Typically, it's going to be October 15th, the end of the growing season. You'll have some aubers that'll let you go into early November, if the weather has been favorable. The concern is really about their first frost, or they go dormant.
So in theory, we could have a meeting in November, where the trees haven't been planted, and there's no ability to plant them, and we'd be looking to possibly roll this over till the planting season, which is springtime. So I'm just throwing out all this information for us to be thinking about, that they, this is going to take an earnest effort.
Why don't we, if I could suggest, and put a little more pressure on the builder, I guess, is that I provide a plan showing the trees to be planted, because if, I'm asking for a waiver, if there's someplace where the law won't allow for it, you're going to have to see that and approve it, that I get that plan to you in October, you approve or disapprove, or tell me to change it, and we put the trees in right away, right after that. Because I don't want to put them in and then have you say, you put them in the wrong place. So, but I would need at least till, is there a first October meeting?
There's a meeting on October 10th, and another one on the 24th.
I would ask to be heard on October 10th with a plan, an amended plan to be approved, and the work to be completed by the second meeting in November. Hopefully, the trees before that.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right. So the idea would be to come back on October 10th with a tree plan.
Yeah.
For us to look at your tree plan, and thumbs up or thumbs down, and you get
Get them in.
Your client to run out and plant them.
Yes.
Essentially. All right. That's a plan.
Yep.
Would anyone like to make a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim, sorry.
One further question. Have you resolved the difference between the neighbors and yourselves, what type of tree is going to be planted?
No.
Or does that be done immediately?
That's, that'll be part of the October 10th meeting.
Thank you. That's all.
All right. All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion what we just said.
All right. So Dave makes a motion that we continue the matter till October 10th for a tree plan approval, and to allow the developer to plant trees if we so approve, still in the growing season. Is that your motion?
Correct.
Beautiful. Second by Kevin. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'd ask for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, six in favor and none opposed. All right. Attorney Salvati, we will see you on October 10th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Planning Board Director Update. Tina?
Yes. So, just a couple of notes, really, about the upcoming agendas for the board. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, we have a couple of meetings in October, but before that, there's a meeting on the 26th. Right now, the only agenda items that we foresee are expiring or expired completion dates for the Jerish Drive, Highview Estates, and Carlson Way subdivisions. We will have at the October meetings, particularly the first meeting in October, there will be a public hearing on a refiled definitive subdivision plan for 43 Pool Street, and we may have something that comes out of the zoning amendments tonight, could conceivably show up in October, but right now, that's all we know. So the one question that I have for the board is that the September 26th meeting at the moment is three bond expirations. Would you want to have that meeting be in person, or would you want that to be a virtual?
Virtual?
For just that, I would say virtual is fine, as much as I don't like virtual.
Well, that's saying something.
He's just saying.
So if Bob is suggesting virtual, then by all means. Carolyn, are you good?
I'm fine.
Good.
Good? All right. So Tina, we'll take up your suggestion that the 26th meeting be virtual, and with regard to the meeting after that, where there's a public hearing, I'm going to think perhaps in-person is always going to be good. Well, not necessarily always, but in that sense, it might be better.
I would agree.
Okay. All right. And was there another meeting we had to weigh in on, or just those two? Because we've just
Nope.
We know that there's October
24th is in there too, but, oh, and October 10th. October 10th, I have no choice, I'll schedule the public hearing on that definitive for that date. So I know there'll be a hearing on the 10th, and I'm not sure what we have on the 24th yet.
So if there's a public hearing on October 10th, then that would be an in-person.
Yes.
And the 26th of September would be virtual, and then the 24th, I guess we don't have to decide today.
To be determined.
We can take that up, depending on what business presents itself on that. Does that work for everyone? Good. Okay. All right. Do you need, do you need us to, are there any more updates that we need to discuss? Okay. So moving on then to any other business matters that may legally come before the board, not known at the time of posting? Are there any?
Not from staff.
All right. And it doesn't appear that there are minutes this time, but likely next time.